Heavenly Father, I am before you as a board of commissioners here in Weston County, asking for your guidance and directions. Please help us to represent you in every way, keeping in mind your fruitages of the Spirit. Help us to exercise your morals and be fair to everyone at all times. In Jesus' name.
Amen.
Mr. Horton would you lead the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone has an agenda in front of them. Do you need making changes or additions to the agenda?
Under Fair Board credit card preauthorization, I'd like to add indoor arena discussion. I don't know if that would be more appropriate under old business. Go on either.
Yeah. They have one in the hot seat anyway, so.
Any other change in additions?
I make a motion to accept the agenda with the addition to the Fair Board.
Second. Have a motion properly seconded to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Motion carried. Next is the consent agenda. Pull anything off there for discussion or questions?
What is, I'm sorry, what is the, remind me on this lease assumption agreement? What's that all about?
That is Ace Hardware bought the old frontier.
Okay.
Basically, we're just updating the lease to the new owners.
Okay.
Because we have that, they leased part of that back from us. Where the south of the annex, where the parking lot is, that where that big brick painting wall is down there, we own part of that west of there. They're basically just leased half of the area down there. That's just updating the lease for the new owners.
I'm due to accept the consent agenda as it stands.
Second. Have a motion properly seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say nay. Motion carried.
Hey Becky. We're working on the consent agenda. Do we have a list of board members for the Fair Board?
We're gonna. Some of them are.
That's gonna take some work. I'm gonna have to put a retainer behind it, aren't you?
Most of them are elected by their producers. All four of them are elected.
Yeah, the drainage just gets clogged. It's gotta come out away from the wall and then go out.
It can run all the way down, bleachers can come out too.
Oh, really?
I'll update that day and then.
That's gonna be a project.
That one.
That's what, about 50 yards?
Okay. Okay.
Really? Wow.
But all these are.
Let me know, I wanna get pictures of that process.
Who would we talk to in, in just clarifying that with Mark? Or finding out whether or not being a public rep would incapacitate you to.
So, who is in charge? Let's see, I think, so Carson Keyline is their secretary. But I believe.
I know it says the statute.
Ray Norris is their, um, one that gives me their minutes. Let me see. There's their, you wanna listen to the bylaws? So, let's see. Their chairman is Carson Keyline. So, he might be one that you could talk to.
Four ten and hunter representatives shall be bona fide residents of the district not engaged in raising sheep or cattle and shall hold or have held either a valid wild and pushing or hunting license or a wild and wildlife damage management stamp within the preceding 12 month period.
So, he does have to help them? And he hasn't because he hasn't, he just moved back not very long ago.
So, he could be either.
The sportsman, I get out of that is that they need, they need to have one within the last 12 months. But I'm looking at not being capable of having one as being a public rep. You see what I'm saying? Because he was wanting to move from public rep to sportsman. So, there must be something in the bylaws that says.
Says he shall hold, and that's in state statute.
That's on the sportsman, right?
That's why he's moving to sportsman. Yep, so he did it right.
It actually says sportsman and.
Public rep.
Public rep.
Shall hold?
It says hunter representative is what it's actually called, not public rep. Second page there, Garrett.
Okay. Do you have any public comment this morning? Is that your public comment, Dave?
Just a couple of things above what Garrett added to it. We did get the credit card machine up, so hopefully.
You're on the Fair Board.
Oh, well, yeah.
We asked him to well to comment.
Oh, I just gonna put out just a couple of comments here for the Fair Board. I'm not asking.
Okay.
Is that, so anyway, we talked about the fairgrounds. We thought we was losing money on the lights and stuff. We got the credit card machine in. Like a gentleman came over and helped us rewire it. It's up and running, so there's nobody, you know, they have to use their credit card and get that. We are in the process, we had a couple of applicants making an offer for the maintenance manager, so hopefully we'll have someone in there in the near few weeks. So, and that's what I have above.
Do you have any other public comment?
I have somebody, it couldn't be, you're wanting me to read just a little comment which we put in there.
That's right.
It's from Carrie, and it was what we were talking about with the link. And I don't know if this is valid or not, so Becky will just have to be the judge on that. But she says, "I did some experimenting when you use the link in the Word document you sent me, you might be able to get into the Teams meeting if you use the PDF agenda that is posted on the website. The link does not work. That appears to be the reason why only courthouse employees can get on the Teams meeting, because they are only ones that receive the original agenda in Word form. If anyone in the community who accesses the document from the commissioner's webpage, the PDF document that I emailed out, or anyone who has purchased Word for their personal computer, will not be able to access the commissioner's meeting. If Becky posted the link directly on the commissioner's webpage, as she has in the past, that might work." So, I'm just reading that as she just said, so.
That was from Carrie, Carrie Droste?
Yep, it's from Carrie Droste.
Carrie, no other public comment, we'll move on to Fair Board. Now you're up, Dave.
So, anyway, Garrett brought up the issue with the arena. Doug Brown has agreed to bring his sifter down, because the sifter's not a grizzly or anything like that. And so, what we're gonna do is we're gonna plan on it. I already talked to Garrett about it, because I know he's gonna be there. Anybody wants to be there, we're gonna try to get a few people from the public. He's willing to bring it down and show us what it'll do. It won't cost us anything. If it's what we want, he's willing to do it for 75 bucks an hour, and I don't see it taking much more than, you know, absolutely most a couple of days, but I can't see him not getting done in a day. If we can get it rated up and sit, he'll bring his old sifter down, he'll bring his unit down, he will not let it, but he'll operate it for 75 bucks a day. If you figure that out, that's almost. An hour. And that there, that pretty much equates like one load of sand when you take a look at the trucking and stuff like that. I don't think it's that bad if, if he comes down and runs it and it's what we want, I don't think we're gonna have that much money involved in.
A little input on the sifter, explain to him a little bit, the grizzly was a pour-down unit, a pour-through unit. This has actually got like a vibra screen on it, and he's willing to do a free demonstration for a section of it to see if the outcome, if it's gonna be pulling the rocks out of it the way that we're hoping that it will.
That's, that's correct. That's what he's, it's actually, that's what I asked him. He's got a grizzly out there, and that's how we started getting the whole, talking to him. And he's actually got a one with a vibrator on it. He was gonna look at changing the smallest screen as he has and bring it down and demonstrate for us. If it works, you know, it's great. If it doesn't work, he'll pull it off and he'll charge. The other thing I have is, I put in, I wanna put in for a credit card preauthorization, we cannot get our QuickBooks to work, come up for anything. I misunderstood the auditors when they was there. I thought everything we had put into QuickBooks was gone. They couldn't even find the program. So, basically, unless someone can find it, give it, how to, another format or something that we can do the audit in, which they told me they wanted in QuickBooks, we have to buy the program.
Well, I don't know what program, what program you were currently using. It may have been almost outdated, or because they, they're always so often they do new program updates?
Yes, and they do.
Well, this will get, if you buy a new one, it'll get you the newest version, so.
Correct, and that's what Dana said. She says, you know, sometimes they don't charge you every year, it might be every other year, every third year, it might be every year, depending upon what kind of upgrades they have in, in the system itself. So, if this gets going, we'd have it, and, but we gotta go back to the same, you know, we talked about before. We need to get the computer, we need to get someone that knows what they're doing, to get an administrator, so everything's protected down below.
When was, so you have purchased QuickBooks before?
We had it on our system, that's what Kara used for many years.
How, how long ago was that?
I have copies that came off of QuickBooks through February. And I think Kara quit us in March.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but QuickBooks comes in one of those boxes with, where you get a serial number and you plug it in and do that. Do we not have any of that record? Either that's not in the computer, that's something that you purchase and you get that serial number, am I right about that, Becky?
We actually, we actually called the auditor, because that's what we was looking for, was that registration number, to see if there's some way we could go back into it that way and have them bring it up, because on homepage, when it comes up, it comes up with that registration number. They cannot find it, you know, as far as what has been sent to them. That's what I've asked for from them, and, you know, I'm assuming they went and looked for it. They said, "We will get back with you the next day," and I haven't heard back from them since. So, and that's kinda where I, I believe, I believe, like the way Dana was looking at it, you can, it can be purchased online.
Yeah, but you'll still get, you'll still get a registration.
Right, and where that registration number's at, we can't get into it to find it as far as our QuickBooks still. I understand that there is that number. I mean, I'm open for anything, if someone could, if they wanna come down and look for it, whatever we can find, I mean, I cannot, we have not found a book or a box or anything for the QuickBooks.
At this point, you're all, you might have more tied up in somebody trying to get into QuickBooks than a new version's gonna cost you.
And that, that's what Dana said, you know, because she's, she's willing to come down and help us get started on it, so, kinda the same thing we talked about before, she's gonna have, help us set up a format, so, because we had stuff that was duplicated in our old system, I do know that, because when a report was run, if the report was run again, it might come up a little bit different, and we'd have to go hunting for a number. And, but anyway, that's what she was in the process of doing when you guys took over the pain of the, of the bunch of stuff you made. And we, I thought we quit the QuickBooks then, we quit having Dana come down and work with us, but Kara, I think, was still using it up through February, because I've got hard copies of, of a lot of stuff through February, but after that, we have absolutely nothing. We can't find it on the computer or anything like that. And that's what I, I guess I'm just kinda looking at. It's obviously we need it, whether, you know, in the future or anything else, so, I just, you know, we can't run it through a budget, I mean, not a budget thing, through the paperwork, because we're gonna have to pay for it before we get it. So, that, that's what that authorization is. Any more questions for me?
With the board's pleasure.
The, the QuickBooks that were the plus or minus 400 is about, that's the price range?
I think what Dana looked at, there was one that was for 399, and there was another one that was a 499, and she didn't think we had to have that upper end one.
She's like, based usually off of like number of employees or something?
I mean, you know. I think it just goes to a pro system, you know, just.
How you're gonna use it.
How the number of employees, if you use the payroll, then they'll, then they'll dig you more if you got more payroll. How that works.
So, we're in need of mainly a basic.
That's what Dana said, yes. And, and there wasn't another one that was cheaper than that, but should be my recommendation when she comes down to look at it and tell us what we probably need going forward for what we, you know, you know, whether we have all the books or we have just what we're doing as far as fair, keep in track of that. Should be my recommendation to the board of telling us which one we need, because I really don't know anything about it.
We use in our business, we'll payroll here, maintenance person actually comes out of the office here, so you don't need the payroll side of that out there. You probably just need the basic. It would be worth the pleasure on that payroll, uh, preauthorization of the credit card.
What, what are we taking it out of? Or are they taking it out of their own budget? I mean, do they have the money for that, or?
Yeah, it'll come out of budget.
Well, David and I talked, and because they have it, use funds out of their salary account, we had talked about moving that money into an account and then pay for it out of that.
How much is on there?
A lot.
I, I also, and I did put it in there, because I did have the cost. We talked about getting a computer too. I was gonna put that on there, but I don't have the cost for what a computer costs and what we actually need, because I'm assuming we need Microsoft, because we can't get anything we have there. I'm assuming we're gonna have to have an antivirus, and we're gonna have to be able to work with PDF files, and I was just gonna, I gotta kinda throw that out to ask other people what they think we might need, but I think that's the basic stuff we'd have to have on our computer. And again, had the cost, that's the only reason I did put that on there, but we can address that at a later date or something.
And didn't we have a computer that we could give to them or let them use?
So, you guys had said that one of the commissioner computers could be given to them, you approved that, contacted Billy to come and get it, and he said that they did want a laptop. When I told him to come and get it.
Now, he hasn't said they can be in that regards. I mean, it's like most, I mean, I've used a lot of computers, because I'll have laptops. If we're gonna use it, I'd really like to have a dock and not that much a docking station with a keyboard, you know, and it just plugs into your big screen is what it does, so. But I have nothing against a laptop. Laptops nowadays would do everything what I think we need, you know, as far as, you know, what we, what we work with, whether it's QuickBooks, Microsoft, or anything like that. I really do think that way. The laptop we have is very old.
I have the one that I, I mean, I designed it out of the box that we got here, and I know it'll run a printer and do everything that you want it to do.
And I'm good at that, give or try, I mean, we're good.
Well, have, have Dan to look at it, if that'll work, you know.
Okay.
Or she's gonna help you guys with QuickBooks, I'd, you know, we have her, if that will, if she can make configure it to work for you guys, you know, you guys.
Oh, I'm positive she can. I mean, I'm positive, I could, if it's, I mean, if it's basically set up, I'm positive I could just jump in and use it too, I just, I just don't know the operations, because I know we got into a bind way back, and we initially bought QuickBooks, and, and people were throwing stuff in it, and we basically cleaning a lot of stuff out in order to make it work. And I think we just need to get her to show us what we was talking about before, so, when we run a report, we run a report, and that is what's in it, that's what's in the machine.
I'll get mine to Becky and then do whatever you need to do.
So, will this pull, when you get the new QuickBooks, will it pull all of your old stuff into it, because that's what the auditors are wanting?
Right, as of right now, the way I talk to the auditors, basically, now, now, we just have Fair in there, basically, so it ain't a lot. It's basically, we have to go in and re-put the stuff that we have in it. That's stuff that we have, that she's already documented out, as far as the balancing of the accounts, the checks, and all that kinda stuff. As far as our perjury statements go, we went through all that, we have all that information, it's, it's set in there. It's just basically, put everything into QuickBooks going forward, and then they can, when we send them their backup or whatever they wanna do with it, they can do sorting of it, you know, do some sorting the way they do it, it makes it easier for them.
So, it's not these accounts, it's just just Fair checking account?
It's just what we write checks on. It isn't, it isn't the stuff that you're writing checks on, you know, and, and it's just basically what we have for, well, you took over in June, so, we have last year's Fair through, through June, so, and there might be a possibility, if we have QuickBooks, they can dump what they have, because they have one that was sent to them in September, I wanna say it was through September or October, and that gets us through Fair, so we've got the big majority of it already in there, but we don't have QuickBooks for the auditors to try and dump it into. And now, that's, that's my first, my first goal would be, as soon as we get loaded, they, they send it to us and we can see if we can open up. If we can open up, we have a lot of it already done, we just got these few months of when, when she was gone in, in March, through the date, and, and that's not, that's not very much. But then we need to pick up to July and, and get that stuff all put in there also, which, you know, I honestly think we're only, if we had to put anything in it, no more than just Fair stuff, we're probably only looking at a day or two. And we should have everything in it for what they was asking for as far as the audit goes.
So, there's 65,429, 19%.
Yeah, there's plenty of money in there for computers.
We just can't use it out of that account.
We have to move it to a different account. A quick question for you, David, is where are you at with the hiring of a manager for your, for the fairgrounds?
I actually made an offer, and I haven't heard back from him yet. We had, we had a couple of applicants, and I think either one of them would do, would be able to do what we need to do as far as getting this going, as far as keeping the facility running and stuff like that. And I would like to say in the next couple of days that he'll get back with me.
So, with the board's pleasure on that, credit card preauthorization.
Do a resolution or?
Well, this is for the credit card to buy the QuickBooks.
But we're still moving money, right?
Yeah, that'll, do we need to, we'll have to a resolution to move the money for? No.
It's within their.
It's within their general, it's within their big budget. Yeah, because we're not actually, we don't need to do a resolution, because we're not actually changing the dollar amount of their total budget, we're just moving within their budget, so we don't have to do a resolution.
I can motion approve the credit card preapproval for the QuickBooks to the Fair Board.
Second. Have a motion properly seconded to approve the credit card authorization for the Fair Board for just QuickBooks. Is there any discussion?
Is there a dollar amount on that motion?
Dollar amount is $400 plus or minus, so. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Kim did a nice write-up on.
Yes, she did.
James Martins, Don Thorson, Gene Baldwin, you know.
Gene Baldwin, what a funny guy.
Oh, yeah.
Cindy said, "Well, just tell them about life on the ranch." Well, I guess I could do that, because I was there, you know? Now, before we start, let's make a deal. If you get done listening before I get done talking, raise your hand. I thought that oughta be pretty good. It oughta be a lot easier than trying to select a speaker for the House of Representatives.
Okay, next up is Hope You Like Fun, that's the. Are they going field?
Reason here with, asking for, with Hope You Always Fun portion of it, we did, a while back, talked to, we'd like to look at purchasing a replacement K9.
K9?
Out with that for the county, to use within the whole county for up to Newcastle and West County for replace our retiring dog. And then, I do have a quote for that replacement portion of it. I know that there's 62,600 in that, that fund.
Give or take?
Give or take. I would like to ask for an allocation of around 36,400 for, for that dog portion of it, for equipment, shelters, continued training and care for the, for the dog. To purchase the dog is 19,500 out of B3 K9, and I do have a quote for that, if you guys would like to see what it involves. It, it would be a real purpose dog. The dog would do narcotic work, which, it would be a tracking and evidence recovered of tracking or trailing. And in the purchase of, of that dog, it would include the training of the handler, the purchase of the dog. I believe it is a eight-week class for the handler, a nine-week class for the handler, and that includes that training time for the handler and the dog to, to learn. It also does the first year of certification with it, which are already members of the Wyoming Police Dog Certification, so we already go through that organization, so we are members of that, so we just continue on that portion of it. And that's the monthly, that also includes a monthly maintenance training throughout the service of that dog, the life of the dog and the handler. So, to move forward with that, we would, I would need to be able to sign that quote and say that we're gonna purchase that dog for the 19,500, but I would need, we would need to pay half upfront for them to secure it. They don't have it, but we have to sign it for them to find the dog and start to get it trained, because it wouldn't be in effect until spring for them to get it up to. up to, for this current class, so we would need about, we would need nine thousand seven hundred fifty dollars for that dog to be okay to, to pay half of, and then the remainder of that fund, I've been talking with the Newcastle Police Chief, and the Upton Police Chief, about equipment portions and, what we could work as a joint, joint together to spend some of that money for, for what we need in enforcement for opioid, we haven't finished passing out of equipment yet, why is it, and what we're gonna do with that, so we just started documenting that, the remainder portion of that.
Hey, Dan, it says this is a nine-week training course, is that gonna take one of you, you guys away for nine weeks?
It, it will take, take the handler for nine weeks.
So, where's that course at?
It'll be in Gillette.
Okay.
And that's where the, the training and everything else is, in Gillette, it's, it's done through B three K nine, Craig Brothers and Cowan Brothers, so, Creek County and some other, other agencies, Sheridan just purchased dogs through them, and then, that's where I've been going for, for training currently, well, I was before.
So you have the housing and all that already taken care of, because you said one's retired, I guess, so.
Yeah, our current dog, Leo, he's, he can't, he can't work anymore, he's, his age and health is, can't work.
How old is Leo?
Nine and a half, almost ten.
Are we looking at like, is that about a standard working range, looking at like, maybe a nine or ten year?
Uh, it depends, it really depends on, on the dog, there, you, you can't guarantee a dog's health will, will last for, for ten years, also depending on, on the breeds and stuff, sometimes they can injury, but generally, generally, most of the dogs last, their, their service life is, is anywhere from six to, to eight years, nine years.
What breeds do they typically use?
Um, majority, it's usually Malinois, Dutch Shepherds, German Shepherds, but you can't just go off of a breed, you wanna go off the drives, and, they, they need to test the dogs, but generally, those are, are your police dogs, but there are dogs that are like Labs and, and other, other dogs, it's just their, their traits and their drives, try not to look just at the breed, we wanna make sure that we get the dog with the right, right traits, and that's, that's what they'll do, but generally, generally, on those dogs, it's, it's a Shepherd, a German Shepherd, a Dutch Shepherd, a Belgian Malinois, they're, the Malinois's and, are usually a little healthier, they're, they haven't had as many issues like the Shepherds, but a lot of the Shepherds are imported from, but, there's been some from Czechoslovakia and stuff like that, a little healthier breeds.
Those opioid funds, are we eligible to use them for this?
For, yeah, because it-
Okay, we gotta make sure.
Yeah, and that's with, with the narcotic portions of it, that's, yes, because it falls into illegal narcotic substances.
Anyway, we have to guide you with that opioid fund, we have to-
Yeah, yeah, and I, and I did, I did look at that, and, and as far as I can tell, we, we are falling within that, I know other counties, Sheridan County bought two dogs off of their funds, and so on and so forth, so I don't, I don't want us to-
I didn't wanna get down that road, and all of a sudden, we're ineligible, we gotta come back and figure out how we're gonna pay for it.
Yes, no, and it, it, it stayed in there, that law enforcement for, for purchase for equipment and, and training and, and other portions of it, to, to combat the opioid portion of it.
Is that, I, I remember reading that stuff, do we lose those funds if we don't use them after a certain period of time, you know, Dan?
I think they need to be earmarked and allocated to be, to be used, otherwise, I think we will be-
It's a long time for them to do something, and we'll keep receiving money for another seven years, eight years, but it's not a large amount that we're gonna keep receiving the funds, but, I know we received another check yesterday, so, it's just a matter of I have a chart, and I can send it to you.
Yes, you'll use, may I have it forwarded? Pull it through there?
When I sent that to Dan, there's a lot of good stuff.
We got to forward that to us in a little bit.
And I, I looked again, the only thing we have to report is if we're using the funds for something, not opioid-related.
Okay.
We're definitely not reporting.
I'll make a motion to allow Dan Fields to apply the necessary funds to secure the dog, and, what was the amount, thirty-six thousand four hundred dollars of that opioid funds money, to retain the dog and get the training process started. I have a motion, profit second, to authorize Deputy Fields to move forward with a replacement K nine for the amount of thirty-six thousand four hundred, to come out of the opioid funds, is there any other discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
Thank you.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now, we also connect with readers through various social media platforms, and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, you can even take a look at a recent meeting of the City Council, School Board, or County Commission on our YouTube channel, we do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you, but regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Dan?
Good luck.
Who's gonna be the handler, you know?
Uh, Travis Carter.
Bye.
See you later.
Next up is old business. Mission Vision Statements.
So, we talked about this last time, you had a chance to look at the mission and vision statements, Becky didn't include the values on, on the agenda, but I have a copy here, if you, so, because the values are, are part of it.
I made copies.
You made copies too, okay, all right.
Yeah, I get one.
Yes. Like we discussed last time, goals are, are something we should talk about in a workshop, and set, uh, set goals for ourselves, set dates, set, set ourselves up to be accountable to go forward, do actions, and the goals we set that day, I think are good goals, are to help us get going in the right direction, and pick some things that were, not things that were gonna cost a bunch of money necessarily, but just different actions on our part. Today, I'd just like to, once again, make a motion to approve the mission statement, the vision statements and the values to be part of our Board of Commission for Weston County, understanding that all those things are something we need to look at periodically, and change, update, and improve as needed.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion, profit second, to approve the mission, vision, and values. Any discussion? Mission, Todd.
I think that Becky needs to get that to the website company, put it on the website.
Yes.
If it's a priority.
Here, I see you're thinking down there.
I'm just, this is the first time I've read down through the values, so if you just give it a second.
I have a motion, profit seconded, any other discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Motion carried. I bet you get that on the website, get it published.
And then I will be sending, I, sending out the handbook, a copy of the handbook from Teton County, so we can start looking at that, but the bylaws and meeting procedures, the, the copy I had wasn't going through, so that's why I haven't got it yet, but I think I got one now that I can stand forward to, encourage us to start looking at it, there'll be things we, of course, don't use, because we're not as big and complicated in some ways, but very good meeting procedures, very basic statute-driven, okay?
Next is a document, can I have the clerk's office?
Okay, so, at the last meeting, we talked about the scanners that are currently at the desks for my girls are too narrow for them to scan the books in the back to move forward if we decide to not go with Baltide, and the ones that I found that are wide enough to scan the books and put those documents in the system are three hundred to three hundred and fifty dollars apiece, I would like to possibly get three, because there is downtime with each of the three girls, so that when they have downtime, they can go in the back, grab a book, sit down, scan it, enter that information into the computer, there is money in the record retention, that's what it's for, it's for the ball, so, I just, we talked about it, I told you, I'd let you know what I came up with, and you guys say okay, we can go ahead and get those coming, and they can start working on that, it's going to take a very long time, because when we started on that system was two thousand or two thousand and two, so from then, clear back to the start of Weston County is where they're gonna have to go.
So, you're talking fourteen hundred roughly, for the printers, I know three fifty each times four, I have three.
Three.
Three, okay.
I mean, I could get one too, there's just not a lot of downtime, I mean, I could.
My question is, will, will, will that, and, and I don't know, this might be a dumb question, will that affect with the new three sixty-five coming in, will we have to do any setup with those new printers, will that need to-
Has nothing, no, it has nothing to do with that, it just go right into my, into our personal-
They just put the drivers in for those printers, and that's it, okay?
Not personal, into our, into the clerk's office, has nothing to do with the rest of it.
I just wondered if it was-
So, I mean, it would make sense to have it at my desk as well, because there is downtime for me as well.
Are there funds there to do that?
Oh, there's plenty of funds, so, I mean, I wish we would've had them a month ago, because I wanted to do this anyways to get it into the system, but we just couldn't get our scanner to go quite wide enough for the books, it was very frustrating, but, even for us to be sitting at our desk to search back when we're trying to help customers, you just can't do that.
So, is there, when you start scanning these, is there like a system that you put them in as far as how they're organized inside the computer that would make hopefully sense to the next company, or, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and what is crazy is when we scan them, it's going to go to Baltide, it's gonna go on to our website right away.
So it'd be easier access to our website, to a name?
These will be, this will be under file that, say, for instance, Vault, a competitor of Baltide could be useful, I mean, they could use our scan.
So, yes, it's going to go on Baltide, the minute we do it, any, any new things that are uploaded, it will go on there, but it'll also be on our own system.
Right.
So that we can, once it's done, we won't need Baltide, because it'll be done daily, any, we're doing it daily anyways.
Right.
Once it's all done and back, and it's on our own system, we won't need the third party, I mean, we'll have the third party, but we're already paying that third party, because we're paying them to make our titles, and to do our tax wise in the Treasury Office, it's gonna eliminate that third party.
On that, and the negotiated price we ended up settling, it was like twenty, twenty percent, I believe, on, on that, was there a charged fee for, like, if those documents are used, is that a, is that a purchase document for the use of that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, at that point, we would then retain a hundred percent of that, of that documentation, correct?
Yeah, I don't know if Tyler Tech charges a small fee, because they are the ones that are setting that up, I'll have to find out how the other clerks, how that works with them, and find out if there's a small charge with them, I'll find that out.
Okay.
I don't think there is, but I'll find out for sure.
I think that's a hundred percent.
Basically, this will be formatted for even Baltide Confederates, anybody else?
Yeah, if we decide to have someone else come in, they're already scanned, they're already there, they just tap in and do whatever.
And we, and we own them, a hundred percent of them.
I mean, we do now, anyway, even with Baltide.
Right.
Whether we control the Baltide-
Right.
But they're already direct indexed in, they're already searchable, they're already, because Creek County paid someone to come in, sit at one computer, direct index everything back, one person, and I said, why would we do that when we have the physical bodies to sit there and direct index ours anyways, you know, when we have a little bit of downtime, and we started to do it, we got the book apart and a little bit in the scanner.
When, working that into your downtime, Becky, just guesstimating, when do you think we would have all of our documents scanned, doing it like that?
It's gonna take a while.
Two years?
I don't know, there's hundreds of bugs, and I don't know, so, back in the day, the clerk's office used to hire high school girls to come in and work, and I don't know if maybe I can hire one high school girl to come in, or, it doesn't even have to be a high school girl, it could be a part-time person, set them up in here, someone that you trust, that's gonna put the documents in correctly, and they could just fit in here, part-time, type in, could just scan it in, it pulls up the image, you pull off the grant or grantee, you type it in, you pull off the legal description, you type that in, and then you save it, it's just a matter of pulling the information off of it, putting it into the system, and hit and save.
Is it a complex system, or just time-consuming?
No, it's just very time-consuming doing it, so then it goes on to the website, and then when you go to search Vera Huber, it pulls everything that is linked to her, right now, it just goes back so far, if you have the township range and section, you could go in there and try to find it, or you just have to keep going back, going back, going back, trying to find it, or you can go to that book, and you can see, just like you're coming in here, looking in the books, going under her legal description, and then you have to go clear back to that- going under her legal description, and then you have to go clear back to that page, you know, that book, one hundred page, whatever, and you can still search it that way. You just have to go to the answers.
I think the way that, that Vaultside has, has conducted their business with Weston County has exposed their monopoly with their service, and I think that's, that's shown us the need for this.
It's sad because we were the very first ones that they did. And when they did it and they scanned our documents, they didn't make it searchable, they just scanned it. They didn't make anything searchable online, you cannot go in, search Vera's name and find everything linked to her, it's just on there. It's not user friendly at all.
Probably just done on purpose.
Well, it sure was.
So.
I'll make a motion to allow Becky up to four printers at fourteen hundred dollars to use, is it out of the records?
Record, what retention fund?
Records retention fund, I think, uh, to get that processed.
Second. We have a motion pro per se to allow clerk Hadlock to spend up to fourteen hundred dollars for, up to four scanners for the documents to come out of record retention fund. Is there any discussion there? Hearing none, all those favors please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say nay. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Moving right along. Next up is new business, it is blank. After that is the ten fifteen four H update from Erin.
One thing I forgot about when we were discussing the creditor board is, I'm not sure how accurate, is this the term when they were initially put on? Because those are limited to six-year terms, and then they ask that they cannot serve after six years. So that's something we have to keep an eye on, I don't, and I don't know, I'm not trying to run anybody off, I'm just saying that Justin may be coming up to his or Jason. Because I know Jason was on there seven, eight years.
So, the second column is when their terms expire.
And then they, is that the end of their six-year term, or is that, so they could have been on there for eight years and nobody's been paying attention?
I don't know.
I don't want that.
Do you not think that the other board members would tell us that?
Well, I think things get forgotten, yeah.
So you think they could only be on for eight years?
Six years.
Six years?
Consecutive.
Six consecutive years.
Yeah.
Six years.
No, I don't think that applies to the achievement and the cabinet, but to appointed members, I think that applies to that.
Oh, let me, oh, you're gonna look, I need to make sure I get that back because that's in their file that they filed with me.
That was a good catch. Probably correct. I don't know, you know, it's a sad thing, because you can't get people to.
So now, okay, so if, say Jason was on for sportsman number three, can he then be, apply for sportsman number two?
I don't know, I mean, you're not supposed to be appointed for any longer than, I believe, it's six years.
But is it to that position and then you apply for another position?
I suppose you can change the color and money or anything.
I just, you're right, people don't, you can't find people to be on boards, I mean, look at how long this one's been vacant. This one has been vacant since I've been clerk. Just like.
Now the public rep's gonna be making that.
These planning ones have been vacant, Mallow's been vacant since Cheney passed away.
Eleven six two oh two is the statute.
Well, that's what I'm looking at, I'm under the term section right here, I'm not seeing, uh, I'll just read this portion of it real quick.
It'd be in section I V.
VI.
Board of County Commissioners shall appoint one director to serve for an initial term of two years, and thereafter for three more terms, Colonel Hector's in the county not engaged in cheaper cattle. No appointed member may serve for a consecutive period of more than six years.
Yep.
So David Billy's term is up in January, just so you know.
But I don't think that, that's creditor or thing. That's just a question.
No, I know, I just went through my list.
So I don't know how you. In theory, they would kind of police out, I would think, and then let the board commissioners know that they're the employee means.
Yeah, because, so that public rep one, well, so now, what happens? So Mark is just moving to the sportsman one, does his start over?
The term would still end at the twenty-four.
If he's in.
That's the only one.
Yeah, his would end in twenty-four.
His, and now Jason's, his is up. But they'll both come off.
You got weary.
But Jason applied in twenty-one, so he can, he can reapply and go actually till twenty-six.
Their three year term, so if he was in three years prior.
But I need to see, he was appointed again, I think.
It could, Jason's been there quite a while.
But Mark will be okay because Mark hasn't been on for very long.
I'm not trying to run anybody off, I just.
No, it's a good call, but you might start advertising for some. Well, all we need to do is let that, let that board know that they need to look at their records as well, because, I mean, that's.
Or just ask them.
We do the appointment.
I kind of think Jason was appointed when, like, in the midst of when I became clerk.
And that was like mid-eighties, right?
Oh.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, years ago.
Yeah, he was.
Ted Malick. Years ago.
Be a question for a person, ask them if that's, for just keeping an eye on that.
Have him look in the records.
Well, we'll take a short recess till Erin gets here.
Good morning!
Tell the meeting back to order, Erin. Erin, you're up.
Hi, we had last night's commissioner meeting, the last one's commissioner meeting pulled up instead of this one. How's it seem after a while? I know.
Thank you, Erin.
Crazy time of the year. Not one, David. Okay. So it's been crazy busy, October and November, um, so we celebrated National Four H Week, which I think was the last time I was up here. Um, we actually had an open house that week and we had a pretty good turnout. So that's, our boss from UW is here, and so I was just telling her, like, I feel like I'm finally getting to that point where I'm getting people in the door and there for activities, so that was exciting. Um, we went to Pittsburgh to the National Four H Youth Development Conference and saw some really great presentations and came home with some really fun ideas, but, um, we, I saw some curriculum out of, oh, no, for the clover buds. So, um, I implemented, actually won a copy of that curriculum while I was there, so that was fun. I taught the first lesson out of it this last, last week, um, and so that was a lot of fun. It's all science and literacy based, so it's a lot of fun, the kids really enjoyed it, so that was fun. Um, we did tumbleweeds and clover buds, both in October, November. We'll take December off, there's just too many million other things happening in December to try and compete with school activities for those type of things. We had Achievement Day, um, and it went really well, but next year we're gonna try something really different for Achievement Day. I'm going to roll it into National Four H Week and we're gonna try and do, I don't have it all figured out yet, but kind of like a family fun Four H, we're gonna end the previous year, start off the new year, and just make it a really fun evening to get families that have been involved in Four H, maybe some new families invited, just a really fun way to celebrate Four H in one big activity, so. I've been mulling that over and what that's gonna look like come October this next year. Shooting sports will kick off in January, so I met with the shooting sports leaders two weeks ago and we're looking at probably eighty-plus kids for shooting sports for all, across all the disciplines, so. Really working on that, we redid kind of our guidelines that we'll send out to parents that just really outlines what that commitment looks like of, the kiddos have to participate in four practices to be eligible for county shoot, to be eligible for awards. Um, we're really gonna encourage them to look at state shoot, so I'm putting those dates out to those kids, we will next week when all of that information goes out. So hopefully they'll start planning towards going to Douglas in July because our kids are very competitive and hopefully encouraging them to look at that next level of participation. Not last week, the week before, we had Epic, so that, our Wyoming Extension Conference in Laramie, so that was really good. Lots of, just fun ideas and had some good meetings with all of the rest of the Four H educators. It's always fun to do, just brainstorming, see what everybody else is doing and kind of some networking. Um, Food Fun Four H cooking classes are back, we started again in October with year two, so that's a lot of fun. The kids, um, have a great time, we, I was in Upton last night for the Four H meeting over there and I think our goal is, is by January to figure out a kitchen that we can use over there and I'll start cooking in Upton as well as here so that we can capture more of those kids and give the Upton crew an opportunity without having to always come to Newcastle, so. Working on some kitchen options over there, so that'll help. The big exciting thing we did this month is we did a new to Four H dinner last Thursday night, so we invited fifty-one youth and their parents and families that were in their brand-new to Four H or their second year in Four H this year to come and, so I could put eyes on them, they would know who I was, they would meet Christie and just kind of kick off on a good foot for this year. I did a little presentation on just my ten tips to be a successful Four H-er and we had thirty-six people there, I was so excited, like, because I made an entire roaster full of soup, I was like, let's hope people show up or we're gonna get real tired of talking soup at my house real quick. Um, but we had a great turnout and we're definitely planning for next year already and gonna tweak it a little bit, but I think, um, of those thirty-six families or thirty-six people, I think I had only met two of the families before. Um, so just really nice to meet them face-to-face, get to have that conversation, that contact, and really kick off the Four H year kind of on that positive note, so I'm really excited for that. Friday we had cookie workshop, last week was kind of a marathon in the Four H world, we met like crazy last week. Um, we made twenty-five dozen cookies, First Northern Bank asked us to do all their cookies for the open house next Friday. So I had eleven kids and three parents come and we made cookies all afternoon and we had a great time. Um, then I've just been going to Four H club meetings and seeing all the awesome things that our kids are doing. Borderline Bandits last week helped at the food pantry at the bread office unload all of the donations from the school. And they helped weigh and do all of that and then had their meetings, so that was just fun. I was in Upton last night for their Four H club meeting and have several new families over there interested in Four H, so. Just lots of really fun stuff there. Um, enrollment-wise, we have a hundred and twenty-one kids already enrolled in Four H for this year. Um, last year, I think at this point, if we had forty, we were doing really good, so. We sent out a postcard right before National Four H Week and really encouraged them, and Christie and I are working on another one that we'll send out. I have seventy-one kids that were enrolled last year that are still eligible for Four H this year. So we'll send out a postcard next week, just as a reminder to get that done and. My goal is, is that eventually we'll get everybody so they kind of re-enroll in October, November, so we have that whole Four H year to do really fun activities and events. So upcoming, I'm gonna do a volunteer training next Tuesday night, so I have some new volunteers and then every five years the volunteers have to do a training, so we're gonna do one there. So Food Fun and Four H will cook again in December, and I have a sewing workshop, so the kids will come and make a pillowcase, start to finish that afternoon, so that'll be a fun one. And then most of our clubs are gonna meet in December, which surprised me, but I'm excited. They've got just lots of really fun things going on, they're all doing some community service in December, which is awesome. Um, and then on the back, I just touched a little bit about the Food Fun and Four H. Um, so we started year two in October and that is a program that we got one of the John P. L. Bogan grants through UW Extension for, um, there's four of us educators, and we were actually awarded, um, UW Extension Creative Excellence Award last week, or two weeks ago at Epic, so it's just a lot of fun. We have ninety-eight youth enrolled statewide right now in that program and it's just a really fun way to get those kids cooking and sharing some awesome pictures and things that they're learning and talking to some of the parents last night in Upton of the things that they're really enjoying, that their kids are learning some cooking skills that they'll have to go with them and a set of recipes that they can take with them, you know, as they move into college and out on their own, so. Let's just spend, it's one of those really fun projects and it's fun to collaborate with some of the other educators and do something that's having a really good impact here in Weston County, but also statewide, so it's a lot of fun. And then just some fun Four H project, or photos, the cookie making group was the first two and then the Borderline Bandits, they're on the bottom, so. We're kind of to report season in December, so not tons of activities trying to compete with all the holiday events and all of our year-end reports, so, any questions about what's going on with Four H?
Any questions for Erin?
Thank you.
Congratulations on the award.
Thanks! It was, I was shocked, they were, I was just like, did we know we weren't even in the running? Couple of the other cops were like, oh, yeah, and I was like, huh, must have missed that, man, oh, but. Yeah, just fun then, it's one that we're really excited about and looking for, so the Albogan grants, you can only apply for two years worth of, like, so the idea is that it's, is the kickstart funds for a really cool project. Um, so our goal is, is to come up with some other grant funding that'll help continue that program and hopefully we'll continue to see like the foods and nutrition project kind of rebound. It was down on, you know, on the lower end of kids enroll and that's a life skill that, I mean, we all need to know how to feed ourselves, so giving them those fun skills and making it a really fun thing and getting them to try things outside of their box, like, the recipe that we made at the office this last, so that was two Fridays ago, was pumpkin mac and cheese, and at first they all kind of turned their nose up and they were just like, and by the time we were done, like, they had all taken it home to share with their family because they were super excited and, like, and making mac and cheese from scratch, like, that's not craft mac and cheese that you dump the powder in and stir it together, like. It's fun to see them super excited and then we way excited when our parents show up, I'm like, you have to try this, we made this, so. Just makes it a lot of fun, so.
How does the pumpkin jive with the mac and cheese?
You don't even taste it in the pumpkin, in the mac and cheese. Um, so it's a really sneaky way to sneak in a vegetable if you have a kiddo that doesn't like them. Um, if you don't know it's in there, and that's, a lot of the dads, like, of course, aren't around when supper is made and made and have no idea that it's there and, um, even my dad, who's kind of a picky eater, will eat it and.
Yeah, my kiddo loved it. Can't taste it at all.
Uh-uh.
Was it canned pumpkin or a, oh, it wasn't the real pumpkin? Come on, Erin!
I only have two hours. That was, with some of the cookie recipes, like, we did, uh, one of the cookie recipes we did was like a box cake mix, and the mom was like, that's brilliant, I was like, we had three kids under the age of seven coming of those eleven, I was like, we have to do some easy, like, pieces, and then we did some a little more complicated, but just picking and. But even like, we made creamy caramel apple cider, the pumpkin mac and cheese, and then, um, oh, honey glazed roasted carrots, and most of those kids hadn't even ever had like roasted carrots and. So just introducing them to new flavors is what's really fun, so, and that's the, when they participate in food, Wyoming Food. So, and that's the, when they participate in food, Wyoming Food Fun and Four H. At the end of each month, they have to answer three questions and submit two pictures and it's so fun to read the question or like their answers of what they learned, what they liked with, and the questions are like, I liked, I wish, and I wonder, so like if they wish they could add more cheese to their mac and cheese next time or try something, and then we try to encourage them, like if you have dietary restrictions or somebody that can't have pasta or gluten, you know, making those changes and then letting us know what you did because we can then share that with other families of here's a way to modify these things that make them family-friendly across the board, so. Not only are we teaching them the skill to cook, but also the skill to hopefully modify recipes to be, to fit into their lifestyles, so. It's just one of those that is really fun and every, like you get to the end of it and you read the comments every month and you're just like, okay, it's totally worth a little bit of extra effort to get it out each month to the, to the state and then with that is we encourage them, so each month there's something that could be a fair project or like a presentation. So this month we talked about like properly measuring ingredients, so the difference between a liquid and a dry measuring cup. And then like the pumpkin cookies could be their fair exhibit, so. Trying to toss lots of avenues of learning into there, so, it's a lot of fun. So if you have kids, grandkids, Nathan's kids are doing it. Um, they don't even have to be enrolled in Four H, we had a family from like Illinois last year that happened to stumble across it on our Facebook page, one of our Facebook pages and jumped in and had fun with it, so. It's a lot of fun, so.
Well done.
Okay, that's all I have for you guys is.
It's exciting.
It is.
The number of kids, you're getting more involved in, how long have you been in this position now?
Twenty months.
Twenty months, hasn't been quite a year, yeah, it's, I mean, look, for me looking back, seeing how the numbers of kids are growing and the more involvement is, it's to me, it's rewarding, it's fun to help you.
It is, it's so much fun, like, that's, our boss is here today and talking. And when I first started like trying stuff and having stuff and, you know, if I got one or two people in the door, like, I was really excited and like the night we did the open house during National Four H Week, like, I had people there and I was like, yes! And then to have thirty-six people last week, like, by the time we're done, it's like, oh my gosh, that was a lot of work. But it's so much fun because they're excited to be there, um, and it's just, I love what I do, so, makes it fun.
Shows to Erin.
Thank you. It's, it was, we'll even go into Newcastle Motors, so their Thanksgiving dinner last week, I have kids come up, run up and give me a hug and you have to come say hi to mom, and it's like, okay, like, it just, yeah, you know, you're making a difference, so. And giving them those life skills and getting them excited to come back and do, do more, so, that's my goal. Get them in and be excited.
Thank you, you've done some good work.
Okay, thank you, we'll see you guys, have a happy Thanksgiving, we'll see you next time.
Thanks, Erin.
Anything else needs to come before the good of the board?
Just wanna also commend Vicki Hayman for her awards, I saw it on Facebook, she does a lot over in the annex and that's well deserved.
Hi, that book that, well, she brought, I think both of them in, but the high altitude baking one, that, it does make a difference.
Oh, yeah.
Those things you have to do different up there. Maybe that's something that we could consider too, and I don't know how, how often that we could put it on uh, the agenda, is maybe just a recognition, you know, for outstanding performance or something like that before adjournment. That might be very nice.
Anything else? Adjournment is in order at ten twenty-five.
Happy Thanksgiving, no, you guys.
Yes, as well.